So I'm like trying to think of all this time I one tickets. Oh, just one ticket. So I go and like three tickets. Oh, like three papers. Three dollars. Three dollars. Actually, the last one was that I got in town. And always like these awful weird things in your pocket. I don't know. Little does she know how many she's done. Yeah. I usually have a Saturday. I have a Saturday package.
Ready? I'd like to call to order the East Point Planning Commission meeting for 7:04 PM, Thursday, June 6, 2024. Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Broll.
President.
Mr. Stokes.
Here.
Ms. Naylor.
Here.
Ms. Yulinski, here. Chairman DeHaan.
Here.
Commissioners have any thoughts they wish to share on Commissioner Lubek? I call upon them, and then we will move into the hearing of the public where people have the opportunity to speak as well.
Good evening. Brian Mark, we're fire chief. It was real shocked to me to hear that Jeff had passed away. Jeff was a lot of larger-than-life at the fire department since I started here in 2001. And shortly after that, they were going to lay some of us off. And, you know, he was at the council meeting pounding his fist, saying, "You can't do this." And every time the fire department needed anything, he was always there to help us out. I mean, without hesitation, all of our millages, anything that we were doing, every time we'd come to the planning commission meeting, he'd always ask, "Did you get your truck yet? Did you get your truck yet?" And so I know, I think he was more excited about us getting that ladder truck than I actually was. But so, you know, to his family, thank you for, you know, him for having to come and help us out all these years. We do truly appreciate it. You had mentioned about having a tree planted in his honor at the fire department, and we would truly be honored to have that there. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. I guess I'm going to jump in next before I get all emotional, and I don't do that often. When I first joined this board, I knew of Jeff because I'd come to some city council meetings. He was the guy that sat in the front, usually next to Walt. Just sat there imposing, didn't ask a lot of questions, but when he did, they were well thought out. So I come up here, and I'm sitting down here kind of where Sheila was is now. New guy, quiet. So he would speak, then there's this long pause. He's like the king of the dramatic effect or something. I couldn't, I couldn't wrap my head around it. And then I realized that he speaks as a chess player. He thinks and speaks five moods that moves ahead of you. So while you're trying to grasp what he's waiting for, he's thinking of answers to every question that you're going to throw at him. And he's going to make sure that everything he says is perfect. Drove me insane. It took me a couple of years to finally figure out that's what it was. So then we, after a meeting, maybe there was something that was annoying him, he would call me, usually when I'm dealing with something or he was on his way into work. Still, the dramatic pause on the phone when we're driving is like, "Oh, my God, it's killing me." But you always knew that he wasn't going to say something offensive. I think I only saw him lose his cool one time, and that was with somebody who was completely unprepared and didn't seem to care that they were unprepared. Jeff was a friend of this community. He was a friend to me, and he'll be greatly missed. Anybody else from the commission or?
I do. When I joined this or was appointed to this commission 12 years ago, fish out of water. And Jeff was very educational and very welcoming. And to say that we lost someone special is the biggest understatement that anyone could ever make. Jeff was just beyond this person that just enveloped you with kindness and his history lessons and how much he knew about the city and how much he cared and it meant to him. I got to say-
I don't know if he started first or I started first. We went back and forth. We never clarified what it was, but we've both been on the commission a long time. And I know Jeff served in multiple commissions. So he was really there for East Point. And, you know, I appreciated his knowledge and his thoroughness. He knew East Point very well. He seemed to know all the facts. It's pretty amazing. But we would work on things like the master plan and the zoning ordinance. And Jeff was always prepared. He wrote everything. He went over it. He read it. He knew it. He was involved. So he was really an asset to East Point. So, you know, there's bigger things than East Point, right? His family and the impact that this is having to them. But, you know, in terms of East Point, he was really, you know, I'll miss what he brought, and I appreciate and respect how he approached it and what he brought, so.
And I'll just add that he truly was a historian. I was newer to the planning commission, and we'd bring up the land use, and he would tell you what it was before that and who had it before that. So he truly was a historian for this community. That information, that living legend, will definitely be missed.
Yes. Vice Chair Jeff Lubek will definitely be missed, is already missed. The planning department will always recognize and remember him as a good proponent of good urbanism and also a proponent of the master plan. So as we seek to update our master plan, may we update it to the standards of Jeff Lubek.
All right. So we have something for Mrs. Lubek before we move into public comments. So this was made for Jeff in '21. A certificate of recognition for his time in the planning commission. He was being pigheaded, and he didn't come and pick it up. So we're going to send it home with Mrs. Lubek, as well as these beautiful flowers that the team at McKenna bought for Jeff and for you. So I'll give these to Kim to pass along with our many peers of appreciation. If there's no other city administrator or commissioner that has any comments, we move into the hearing of the public. You have three minutes to be heard. I don't have my glasses on, so you might get a little more than three minutes. Please put your name on the tablet of paper and be heard.
Hi, everyone. Let's see here. I'll write my name down. Yeah, Jeff, I think to everyone will be known as someone that always volunteered his time for the community. In our agenda management system, gives you a lot of results because, as everyone knows, he liked to come to the podium and hear the public and let you know what he was thinking. So there were plenty of times where I'm like, "Oh, yep, this meeting, this meeting. I remember him saying that." And that, I mean, going back to well before I was at any council meetings. And it was just interesting to see all the different things he was saying. But yeah, as everyone said, you know, zoning board of appeals, planning commission, he was local officers compensation commission, a lot of master plan stuff. I remember when I first got involved, he was talking about that sign ordinance that was done in 2013. Yeah, he's gonna, he's gonna be missed. I'm sorry, Lois. Sorry. That's all.
Hello, Mike Kleinfeld, East Point resident. I know I'm going to be echoing what some of you already said. Jeff was really a large piece of this community. I always thought he was a very colorful character. It was very enjoyable to talk to and echoing what some of you said up here about him having a lot of knowledge of the community. When I first got on council, he was one person that I think I called several times to ask about history or what's going on. He always sort of knew the answer, how, where we came from, where we got to where we are. And I think it's really going to be missed, having someone who just knows that much about the community and was just really enjoyable to talk to, go back and forth. You could disagree with them. It was fun to have a conversation with them and argue or debate over issues. And he really did care about the community. He didn't just show up for commissions he was on. He was at everything. He paid attention to everything going on in the city. And he worked hard and put his time into try to make this a better place. So he's really going to be missed. I think his experience is going to be missed, his stories. And I also wanted to say, I knew we had that plaque waiting for him at City Hall, and he never came to pick it up. Not surprising to me. Jeff was involved with the city, not for any accolades or anything like that. It's not surprising to me. He was like, "Whatever, I have an award. It's fine. It's sitting up at City Hall." If we were lucky enough to still have him here, we'd ask him to stand up and applaud as we award that award to him. So I'd ask if we do that now, just to recognize him for that.
Thank you.
Good evening, planning commission. I probably have known Jeff the least amount of time of anybody in the city, except for those who are much younger than me, maybe. I don't know. But I had a heavy heart when I got the word that he was no longer with us physically. Spiritually, I think he will always be a part of our lives because systematically, we sparred over Facebook, and he never had a problem putting me in my place. But he did it in such a way that I recognized what he was doing, but I did not argue with him about that. I might have argued with him about some other things. But I can appreciate the fact that as much as we argued, he came to a place that we agreed to disagree. I remember a couple of times he actually called me to tell me he disagreed with me and it was okay. But at the same time, something that happened a few years ago surprised me because I didn't think he was paying that much attention to me. And that was when there was a discussion about my running for mayor. I didn't know I had a proponent in Jeff Lubek. That surprised me, but was very much appreciated. And Lois, I want you to know, I will not forget that. I really appreciate the attention that I was-
And a half. And they wanted to put signage on the side of their building. So I says to, I says to Jeff, "Why don't we let them do it? And then when it's done, we'll show it to council." So we did. And then we petitioned council to change the sign ordinance. I says, "Why, why is Roseville getting all the businesses and we don't?" And I says, "If you take a look at their signage, they let them put up a lot more than we do." And Jeff went at them too. Okay? Eventually, they changed the signage. But Jeff, Jeff was a force, okay? If you were a little squeamish and didn't want to get out there and do it, he'd be right there behind you. But yeah, I'm going to miss him a lot. We used to go to all the meetings, and afterwards, we'd go out and eat and drink. I don't have anybody to do that with anymore.
First Thursday of the month, Will.
My name is Leo Lallan, longtime resident of the city of East Point. I always found Jeff to be highly intelligent and always prepared. Could always count on Jeff to participate in our discussions. As you know, and a lot of these people don't, I sat on the board for eight to 10 years. And I used to, I used to smile when Jeff would say something like, "18 years ago, when I was on the zoning board of appeals, we did this or we did that." I have trouble trying to remember what I did last week, and he's doing, going back 18 years. I just want to end with, Jeff, we're going to miss you.
Does anyone else wish to be heard?
I'm Lois Lubek, East Point resident. Thank you all very much for the kind comments you've made about my husband. You have no idea what it was like being married to the man. Look at that sign. Oh, my goodness. Needed to move. We were looking to buy a house. It had to be in East Point. There was, there was no thought of moving to any other city. We had to stay in East Point and preferably in, not in South Lake School District and definitely not on a corner lot. And those of you who've been to our house know we're on a corner lot in South Lake, but that's okay. Yes, he was larger than life. He was larger than life in my life as well. And it's going to be challenging to live without him. But again, thank you all for your kind comments. I only wish he were here. I want to take that plaque home and say, "Look what they gave you." But I'm sure he's with us in spirit, and he's seeing it all. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to be heard? Anyone else wish to be heard? I'm not doing Sheldon Cooper. We're done it too. The hearing of the public is closed. We will move on to the approval of the minutes from May 2, 2024. Can we get a motion, please? So can we get a motion to approve the meeting?
Motion to approve.
Do we have support?
Support.
Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Ms. Yulinski, yes. Mr. Broll?
Yes.
Mr. Stokes?
Yes.
Chairman DeHaan?
Abstain.
Moving on to the public hearing, can I get a motion to open the public hearing? Item A, receive comments on special land use request for 24340 Grashit and auto sales facility.
Motion to open public hearing.
Second.
We have motion support. Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Yulinski, yes. Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Mr. Broll?
Yes.
Mr. Stokes?
Yes.
Chairman DeHaan?
Yes.
Your arm deck, Ms. Brozchevsky.
Chair, is this where we like the public to address the public hearing?
Could you introduce?
Or you want to introduce?
Introduce the item that way. If anybody has questions, they can.
Sure thing. Okay. So we are reviewing a special land use request for 24340 Grashit, an auto sales facility. This is an existing auto sales facility.
Wish to be heard. Seeing none, we will close the first hearing of, I'm sorry, we will close the first public hearing. And we have, we need him closed, correct?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to close? Item A.
As Mr. Lubek would say, so moved.
We have motion. Do we have support?
Support.
We have motion support. Secretary, please call the roll.
I even put it under his name. Mr. Broll?
Yes.
Mr. Stokes?
Yes.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Ms. Yulinski, yes. Chairman DeHaan?
Yes.
Moving on to item B, can I get a motion to open the public hearing for receive comments on special land use request for 24717 through 24757 Grashit, a dealership?
Make the motion.
Do we have motion? Do we have support?
Support.
We have motion support. Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Broll?
Yes.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Mr. Stokes?
Yes.
Ms. Yulinski, yes. Chairman DeHaan?
Yes.
Ms. Brozchevsky.
Thank you. So this is another similar project to the one we just heard. It is an existing car dealership seeking to reoccupy the existing car dealership. So Gravity Auto Sales is in pursuit of a special land use and site plan. The site plan is based on the May 15 submission, and the facility has been a car dealership since 1982.
Does anybody wish to be heard on item B? Does anybody wish to be heard? Does anybody wish to be heard? Seeing none, can I get a motion to close the second hearing of, uh, public hearing?
Motion to close the second hearing.
We have motion. Do we have support?
Support.
We have motion support. Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Mr. Broll?
Yes.
Mr. Stokes?
Yes.
Ms. Yulinski, yes. Chairman DeHaan?
Yes.
Moving on to the third public hearing, receive comments on special land use request for 22100 Grashit, a parking lot. Can we get a motion to open that public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
We have motion. Do we have support?
Support.
We have motion support. Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Broll?
Yes.
Mr. Stokes?
Yes.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Ms. Yulinski, yes. Chairman DeHaan?
Yes. We were in receipt of comments from a resident in-
Uh, we were in receipt of comments from a resident in regards to this, I believe. Can you read that into the record, please?
Yes, Chair. Do you wish me to introduce the project?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, please do.
Okay. Um, so I'll read off what we have in the summary memo. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't pull it up here. Okay, so the applicant Keystone Auto recently demolished a building to create a gravel parking lot. Parking lots are not permitted per section 8.06J. Parking areas must be provided with asphalt or concrete surfacing. Further, parking lots require special land use approval and are only permitted if they are in accessory use to a principal business establishment. And the site must be adjacent or adjoining to the principal business establishment. The parking lot in the proposed project will serve the retail auto parts store and the office to the north of the site. The building department issued a demolition permit in November 2023 for the demolition of a house and, uh, for demolition of a house. But the parking lot did not pass the final inspection and received a violation. The violation states restore grade to original condition, seed area affected, remove all vehicles. Owner will need site plan approval for car storage lot. The planning department wrote a letter on May 7th notifying the applicant of zoning ordinance violations, and the code enforcement visited the site on May 14th, and the vehicles were not removed. As of May 28th, the applicant still has not passed the final inspection. Zoning description of the project is, the application was submitted and accepted by the planning department on May 14th. The site is located within the downtown district. The zoning ordinance regulates parking lots in the downtown district as a special land use. And parking lots are defined as a facility providing vehicle parking spaces along with adequate drive aisles and maneuvering, designed for, and used for parking of any operable vehicle by the public. No storage of non-business related vehicles is allowed. Business related vehicle storage is permitted if the vehicles are operable or if the storage of the vehicle is for a period of 24 hours or less. Parking lots are not for storage of business related vehicles for a period greater than 24 hours. The applicant cannot store vehicles within this property. Outdoor storage is prohibited in the downtown district. And the planning department informed the applicant in November of the requirement to obtain a special land use to build a parking lot. The applicant went forward with demolishing the site and installing a gravel lot without using zoning ordinance permission. The applicant seeks special land use approval to use the site as a parking lot. The site is, uh, site plan is tabled until the July 2024 Planning Commission meeting because the applicant never submitted a PDF site plan, which is a requirement. And the public comment that we received?
Please.
Okay, from Myleen, who is a 25-year resident within the city of East Point, has some concerns about the demolition of the building and the current use today, which is an eyesore. Cars are going every which way. Hoods are up, airbags are inflated, windows are down. Based on the planner's review and findings of facts in the May 30th letter.
Is anybody from the facility or? Does anybody have any questions for the gentleman?
Yes, Eric Kider, 44045 Grashit, Clint Township, representing Dynasty Auto Sales. Again, as the planner stated, that this is a reoccupancy of an existing auto sales dealership. We're gonna be improving the site a little bit by planting some trees, some planter boxes, restriping the parking lot. It's a small, small auto sales dealership, about 15 cars, so, uh, so we seek approval.
Does anybody have any questions for the gentleman? Seems pretty cut and dry to me. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item B, consider a motion to approve a site plan for 24340 Grashit and auto sales facility.
Chair, I believe we need a motion.
Can we get a motion to consider recommending special land use approval for 24340 Grashit?
Before we do that, Chair, can I ask the city planner? So is this a new business owner or was the store vacant? What is driving this at this moment in time?
Chair, this is a, a new business owner, and they never had a special land use on file to operate this use, which requires a special land use within the district it's located.
New owner?
New owner.
Okay, thank you. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to... Do we read the motion? Let me find it.
You can always have them or read it and then you can just...
Yeah.
There we go. There you go. You write them so well. Practice makes perfect. You're perfect.
Okay. Motion to recommend approval of the proposed special land use for a used automobile dealership at 24340 Grashit, based on the findings of fact in the planner's review letter dated May 30th, 2024.
I move to make that motion.
We have motion. Do we have support?
I'll support.
We have motion and support. Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Broll?
Yes.
Mr. Stokes?
Yes.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Ms. Julinski, yes. Chairman DeHunt?
Yes. Can we get a motion to approve the site plan for 24340 Grashit? As this is a reuse, correct?
Yes.
And legally, we, because it's a reuse, we just...
Uh, Chair, so there's some items for discussion?
Okay.
Okay, um, so as listed in the planner's memo in page, uh, beginning page on the... A summary of site plan compliance, there's a couple items that we need to address. So just for everyone to be on the same page, the vehicle access and circulation is not in compliance, and we must have the width of the maneuvering lanes, and the dimensions must comply with the city code and approved by the city engineer. Remove, maneuvering lanes must be clear of obstacles, and they must have a turning radius to indicate safe and sufficient space between parked cars and the drive aisle. We may need to eliminate some parking to the north of the site in order to fit, or accommodate for safe maneuvering. And just so the planning commission knows, these are items that can be addressed administratively if you choose to conditionally approve the site plan. I just wanted to speak them into the record. We, let's go on, need a photometric plan and cut sheets of lighting fixtures. Parking spaces must be striped and, um, the dimensions must be you, um, and throughout, the same throughout the site and meet the ordinance standards. Cars can't park in the alley. We need screening. Um, so right now, we have bumper blocks, and the applicant must remove bumper blocks, which are prohibited as outlined in section 8.06G. And they must be replaced with a screening device, screening wall. To avoid excavation, we recommend a screening wall, but the applicant can also install a landscape screening. And there's a couple waivers here. So for the planning commission to discuss is waiving the landscape architect's seal because this site has, um, it's, it's a smaller site and it just entails a reoccupancy. So we don't need a professional arch, a landscape architect's seal. We also recommend to waive the site trees. And then for the frontage landscaping, the applicant must plant three deciduous trees. Only two are proposed. And the planning commission needs to determine if they recommend waiving or having a payment in lieu of two ornamental trees. So three waivers up for discussion.
So Mara, um, what was the first item you addressed? What was the very first item you just talked about?
Maneuvering lane.
So you, and you said this can be addressed administratively. Like if, if the maneuvering lane's not sufficient, how are you gonna address it? Like, or is that what you're suggesting we give them a waiver?
As far as used car lots go, it's a nice, tight, compact, it's always been a, a nice operation there when it was, whoever had it prior, so.
Can you read the motion, please?
Motion to... Motion to approve with conditions the site plan for a used automobile dealership at 24340 Grashit, provided that a revised site plan is presented to the city planner to address the comments during the planning commission meeting and the required and recommend, recommended conditions outlined in the planner's review letter dated May 30th, 2024, and the required conditions in the engineer's letter. And based on the fact that the site plan is in generally compliance with the ordinance listed on the first page of the site plan review is the information needed for site plan conditional approval. And listed below are the waivers.
I neglected to ask you a question before you read that. I apologize. Is there any issue with the, the way this particular lot relates to the master plan?
Um, Chair?
Please.
So this lot is a regional, that's a good question, regional commercial use. The grant, the master plan doesn't need to be updated, but currently as it stands, it's a, a regional commercial use. And the zoning district is also regional mixed use. So we deem automobile types of uses as more regional uses and there's not a conflict from that use perspective.
Okay. Uh, the motion you read, I'll make that motion.
Uh, Chair?
Please.
I just want to give the applicant opportunity because there's been some back and forth about the, um, the requirement for screening, and screening is required, and bumper blocks aren't allowed. So this is not screening, uh, because it doesn't screen. So if there's any questions about that, this would be the time to address.
Please.
Yeah, uh, when Dynasty kind of took it over, the existing bumper blocks have been there since the last couple occupants, so. We'd like to keep them, but if you ask us to remove them per the ordinance, we will and do more of a screening, landscape screening.
Yeah, let's get in compliance with the ordinance. Yeah, I, I think that's what you got.
It'll look nicer too. Okay. Yes.
And that's, you'll handle that administratively as part of the motion, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So Chair, if I may, um, we can work together
Yep.
in office hours and, um, address the site plan administratively and get that final site plan approval. Uh, and then for the special land uses, just because I know I'm like back to back show today, but for the special land uses in the room, we have you to be scheduled at city council um, on the May, or sorry, the June 18th meeting at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the clarification. I still made that motion.
Are we also going to read the waivers into the record as well?
She didn't read them into the record. She...
The site. And also waives the site tree standard because it is excessive. That's a specific standard within the zoning ordinance, other than the landscaping frontage trees, just for everyone in the room. And then planning commission also waives the landscape architect's seal requirement.
Mr. Broll, will you reaffirm your?
Yeah, I, I make that motion.
I'll support.
We have motion and support. Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Broll?
Yes.
Mr. Stokes?
Yes.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Ms. Julinski, yes. Chairman DeHunt?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item C, Ms. Brozchevsky. We've already discussed that. So we need to consider a motion to recommend special land use approval for 24717 through, and 24754, I'm sorry, 757 Grashit, a dealership. Do you have anything for us to present, or to present to us?
We have a motion to recommend approval of the proposed special land use for an automobile dealership at 24717, 24757 Grashit, based on the finding facts in the planner's review letter dated May 30th, 2024.
Does anybody wish to make that motion?
Um, well, can I, uh, similar to the last one, wh- why is this being brought to us at this moment in time?
Chair?
Please.
There is a change in ownership. And there's no special land use on file, and the zoning district requires a special land use.
Does, and how does this particular, uh, unit relate? Is it the same type of relationship to same, uh, to the master plan?
Yes, good question. It's still in the mixed use regional district and the regional commercial future land use situation.
Did she read the motion? Motion? Yes.
I will move to make that motion.
Okay.
What motion? Do we have support?
Support.
We have motion and support. Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Broll?
Yes.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Mr. Stokes?
Yes.
Ms. Julinski, yes. Chairman DeHunt?
Yes. Consider a motion to approve site plan for 24717, 24757 Grashit, a dealership.
Okay, uh, so there's a couple different items to discuss here. Again, I'll go over the summary memo and then some waivers. Three waivers are the same, except for there's, um, one more. Okay, um, so the first item is that the site plan must be submitted and drawn to scale. That is a standard within these types of plans. It is not drawn to scale, so we must have a site plan drawn to scale. Let's go on to vehicle access and circulation. Again, we must indicate the width of the maneuvering lanes on the site plan and the dimensions must comply with the city code. We must maintain the clear vision triangle by removing the fence that's in violation of the clear vision triangle, so the 20 feet at the quarter intersection of a, um, the alley and the residential street must be, like, uh, if you draw a triangle, a 20-foot triangle, that must be free of vehicles. But we can also follow up if there's questions in office hours. I'm free to, um, have a meeting to discuss. And we must provide the photometric plan along with the cut sheet for lighting fixtures to ensure that they're shielded. Let's see, parking must be striped, and one van accessible space must be provided. And we must have usable floor area and employee information. Going, we must remove the chain link fence. Chain link fences are not allowed in the ordinance, and neither are the slats within the chain link fence. So we have to have the proper screening devices. And on that note, oh, in the lawn area, I'll go back to screening in a second because that's a topic for planning commission to discuss. But in the lawn area, since there is room for lawn area, it must provide native paintings, flowering plants, grasses, and that must be listed on the site plan. And they must plant 10 deciduous trees or the amount determined by the planner when we receive the site plan dimensions. Um, because it might be, I, I assume that it's 10 trees per my calculations of lot frontage, but I could be wrong. Provide one ornamental tree, and then we recommend a waiver or a payment in lieu of 11 trees. So going to, we have our, our landscaping waivers, the traditional ones that you guys are familiar with, so either grant a waiver or payment in lieu of 11 trees. Also waive the site tree requirement. What we talked about earlier is the, um, site frontage landscaping requirement. So we want to waive the site tree requirement. Waive the requirement to install a below grade landscape island, but the applicant must still provide a landscaped area above grade because the parking lot consists of 20 spaces or more. Um, and then we also waive the landscape architect's seal requirement. One thing I did want to address to planning commission is the location of the screening wall. So right now, this is the chain link fence with some slats, and then here's the residential property. As you can remember, the chain link fence, um, this is the residential property across the way. Here are the slats of the chain link fence. So as you remember, there's, um, instances where in the past, the planning commission's required the screening wall to be on the, uh, what is this? West side of the alley, the, the alley that, um, screens directly the residential property. So it's up to the planning commission to decide where they want to place the screening wall, if they want the screening wall to be here, abutting the residential property, or if...
Around with large expenses. And it, it, it always bothers me with these things a lot. And I also understand though, that we have expectations that we have to... And I also understand, though, that we have expectations that we have to uphold, and we have ordinances that we need to follow. It just drives me insane when this happens. It's like we close our eyes, and all of a sudden, we've got to do things. So I guess that was my little soapbox issue there, but is this something that, you said that we needed a new, was a new site plan started to scale, or you needed information, is this something that we need to tackle right now, or is it something that you think that needs to be tabled? I'm just curious what you think. What would make this better for you, and for the parties involved?
Chair?
Please.
Yes, great question. So I recommend that this is conditionally approved to be handled administratively, because as you were alluding to earlier on in this meeting, site plans must be approved if they meet zoning ordinance standards. And some municipalities are moving in the direction of not requiring Planning Commission to review site plans at all, because if they meet zoning ordinance standards, they must be approved, and they just have administration approval of site plans.
So your recommendation is to conditionally recommend
Approve.
Based on administrative approval and working administratively?
Yes, with the waivers and then discussion of where you'd like the screening wall.
For the ordinance, though, isn't the screening wall, obviously required, shouldn't the screening wall be on the residential side? Isn't that the ordinance?
Commissioner Naylor, what?
I was saying, the screening wall typically is abutting up against the residential property line?
Chair, yes, the screening wall is usually against the residential property line. It usually screens the alley, because the alley is recognized as a form of commerce, so it's screening businesses, non-like uses.
I drove
So, so the chain fence with the slats is, say, on one side of the alley,
Yeah.
The other side, we have the residential, they have their own privacy fences up.
Yes.
So to put the screening wall, is either we put it behind the residential's privacy fence, I saw two, maybe two, so two properties with privacy fence, and now we have to put the retaining wall, is that going to damage or impact their fencing that they already have?
Chair?
Please.
The, is, if the, are you asking if the screening wall to the, or the post-screening wall to the west of the site will damage the adjacent residential screening wall?
Yes, if residents already have a wall up, and we're going to now come put the, is there enough room and space to infringe on those owners? I thought I saw two lots that had their own privacy fence up. So I know we have those requirements that we have, and this is a
When I
If the option is it could be on the same side as the fence that's already there, I just always feel that an infringement on owners who's already been there, a new business come, and now you talking about their property line, what they already put for their personal use.
Chair? Please.
My question was going to be, has the resident expressed any opinion of anything? And wouldn't their fence have to come down because you can't have them abutting each other?
Chair, I do not know the ordinance standards as it relates to a double screening wall. I do know that is not uncommon to have a commercial screening wall on the west side of the alley, but we do have other people in the room today that might be able to answer some of these questions more particularly.
Okay.
Chair? My name is John Myers, I'm the city public official. There's several questions that you bring up that can be answered a little more clearly. Our ordinance doesn't grant fences or
He needs a light, excuse me, she's saying he needs a light.
I'm sorry. Our ordinance doesn't permit double fencing or double siding. And number two, the concern we have, if you have to take down the chain link fence that's protecting and guarding the property of the car dealership, and you leave no fence there because you put it on the other side of the screening wall, then he, and the ownership has a difficulty of protecting their property at the same time. And so there's two valuable issues to consider. If you put it on the west side, you're going to have to request the owners to remove their fence to comply with the other part of our ordinances that says you're on another put one fence, you cannot put fences back-to-back. So that would be the question that you're asking, and would be answered from that ordinance.
It seems to me that we had a similar situation with Genesis, when they had to go through this whole thing, and we allow, we allowed them to, yeah.
Yes.
I would be more interested to find out what the residents have to say. If the residents are perfectly content with the way it is right now, I have no problem asking for a waiver, unless, you know, I'm
And Chair, we did that before, where there was a family that had a fence up and they didn't want it taken down to comply. So I think it should be, if we can waive it, we waive it, but really, we really do need to hear from the residents. And I also, you know, the part that it is a car dealership, they have to have a fence of some sort to protect the asset, so.
How many
And I'm kind of like you, Chair, you know, if, I know we change in ownerships and things of that nature, but there are some investments that, you know, we have a new owner have to do all these investments, we might need to review that. But it's some things that, or if this could be waived, sometimes I think the standards are a little bit steep for something that's been existing for years and years.
But when
Some kind of grandfather clause or something.
Yeah, we don't grandfather very much. When we change the ordinances, they're changed, and any new business has to come up to the standards that we now set.
I understand a new business versus a new building, you know, when we talk about a new building, someone's coming in, there's an existing building, do we have those same, you know, the buildings have to be cut open to do all these different compliances, we do waivers on some of the structures. I know this is fencing, but fencing can get quite expensive. That's what I'm thinking about, that's an investment. Especially, I would just say we should probably hear from the residents before we really make a decision on this, because that's going to impact them in their investment.
Has anybody reached out? Did the residents receive their notification about the public hearing and all that? Is anybody, any of the residents here?
Okay. What I would say about, so there's a couple of good points about fencing along the residential, on the residential side against, in, on an alley. And we face this, as long as I've been on this commission, and my stance has always been, if the residence is expressing that they're okay with it not being replaced, I'm okay with it. We have not received that. In lieu of that, I would say the fence should be on the residential side to be in compliance with what we've enforced, that's been in the ordinance for decades. So, however, in this particular instance, how many residential units abut their, their lot?
Two homes.
So what, you know, so like, for instance, we could have a situation where if we reach out to the residents, we could have a resident, one resident said, oh, I would love to have it replaced, and the other resident said, no, I still want my wood fence there. I mean, to me, that doesn't, I would, I would not be in favor of having two different fences along that lot line. That, let's create, you know, create a consistent, a consistent fence, like we have done so in the city for decades. So, you know, I'm not saying I'm not in favor of reaching out to the resident, but I would like to see the consistency from the residents personally. I wouldn't want half of, half of it being masonry wall and half being wood fence.
When I drove through there the other day, it really does look unkempt, and I understand the business has been closed for a while. It just looks really bad back there.
Add one more thing, too, I'm sorry. You know, it's accurate that it's an expensive endeavor, but we've held other businesses to that standard, so while we are not trying to impose additional expense to anybody in the city, that is what the ordinance was, we're not making some special rule for this particular applicant. You know, this is what the ordinance is, and that has been consistent with how we've approached it and what other applicants have had to pay, so I, you know, I'm approaching it as well from that perspective. Ms. Brushevsky?
Sure, Chair, I was just coughing, but I will say something. So I just want to represent that, like, again, echoing Commissioner Broll, we've held other businesses to the same standard, and we've recommended, what is your name? This aluminum, like, metal gate as a source of protection if we need additional security from the site, but chain link fences are not allowed. And this gate is actually used in the storage lot facilities, Button Left by Stevens in Grashit. But I will also mention, just for clarity for the commission, this, the reason why we're talking about this site is because it is a special land use, and it needs more discretion from city boards and commissions. But when we get reoccupancies, we don't, like, just that are permitted by right, we don't require them to install, like, trees, or update their screening, or meet the transparency requirements, et cetera, because their use is permitted by right. But those that have special land use discretion, that's when we bring them to you. So you miss, like, probably like 20, 50 reoccupancies that we issue on a monthly basis. You just get the ones that need special land use approval. And I will say, when we talk about grandfathered uses, we have a very flexible ordinance that allows for non-conforming uses to maintain inconformance, but then also expand upon their non-conforming nature through our Class A non-conforming use designation. Many cities don't let, like the Winter Sausage, who's an industrial business within a commercial district, they don't let them expand, but we do, we have an avenue to support businesses. So I just wanted to give us a reminder of how we are helpful.
To be clear, on that fence right there that you have presented, is that, that's your recommendation, or that's the fence you're suggesting on the business side of the alley? Is that accurate? You're not suggesting that on the residential side?
Chair, yeah, this is a recommendation, or one idea of how a security fence can be installed, that's not chain link.
Maybe I'm being overly generous today, but I don't see an issue with the chain link right now, I mean
Chair, chain link fences are not allowed in the zoning ordinance, and Planning Commission does not have discretion to offer waivers for chain link fence.
And when did that change?
It's always been in the ordinance. When did it change? Not sure.
All right, and the chain link fence has been there for how long? And nobody's ever done anything to it? Nobody's ever called anybody out about it? This, for the same reason why we were so difficult with the banquet facility, you know, I understand ignorance of the ordinances is no excuse, but the simple fact of the matter is, the city has allowed this to go on for however long. And maybe we need to start policing ourselves and not allow these things to happen. So now we've got somebody who's willing to reinvest in a rather large parcel, and I just, I have an issue with that. I have an issue with that, you know, shame on us for allowing it to happen for however long it's been going on. And now suddenly, we're going to slap these people with $3,000 worth of new fencing or potentially more. So that's just my, my personal feeling.
Mr. Chair, please.
Mar, would the applicant have the option to go in front of the zoning board of appeals and seek variance to keep the chain link fence? I know that the Planning Commission doesn't have the option to waive that, and I know the standard for a variance certainly is high, but would they have the option to do that if they wish to do so?
Chair, okay, so there's a couple things. The applicant always has the right to seek additional planning process, and the zoning board of appeals is an additional cost, I don't remember the cost off the top of my head, but I think it's a $500 application fee, non-refundable, including an escrow account. And then the zoning board of appeals is also very trained, and they do not offer self-created hardships, waive variances for self-created hardships. So this would, from my understanding of planning, variances not qualify for a variance. If the Planning Commission wants to change the ordinance, that's one thing. But again, this is, not that the city has been lax daisical, it is, it has been a non-conforming area in the city for a while now, and then now we have this provision in our, in our ordinance that says if a special use is required and there's none on file, then the property owner has to bring their site into compliance. And we updated this ordinance with this provision to help uplift sites like this and meet, like you said, Commissioner Broll, visions of the master plan. So now is the time to review this property.
If a fence went up along the residential side, what are the applicant's options for a security fence, to your point about securing the lot, their side of the alley?
They would still have to put a security just for their own health and safety.
And it would just be increasing the cost.
That's their choice, that's
That's correct.
Not required.
But they would, that would be, that would, if they didn't want any security, then they could take the illegal chain link I am, that is on, the green light is on.
I hear you, Speaker. I hear you.
So the concern is that they would still need to take the chain link fence down according to the ordinance, they could make the choice for themselves whether they wanted that chain, that chain link fence replaced with another security system or not. But that would be an increased cost in fencing, as a, as a company that would be required to bring a legal non-conforming back to conformity.
Anyone have any other questions? This is one of those things I just don't like.
I have a quick question. It's with respect to, so the existing chain link fence is what everyone's saying that we have to replace. When you're talking about the fencing on the other side, where the residents are
The alleyway.
I'm sure you're familiar with it, Chair. You've driven down there, the residents access their driveways, so to speak, their homes, because it's off of the alleyway there.
Correct.
So if there are fences on the opposite side, it would prohibit them from their area, accessing their home area. Do you know what I'm trying to say?
Yes.
I'm sorry, that other picture, when you go back.
It's just, I mean, visually, there is no aesthetic value to the area because nobody's maintaining that alleyway at all.
Right.
If it were maintained, it would look much better. I guess I've lost on the chain link fence.
Well, may I jump in, please? For clarity, there's not a suggestion to put a wall abutting all cemetery there in that picture right there, right? It's, go to the next picture, if you would, please. That's where you would have a wall.
Yes, okay.
I mean, the, the chain link fence is out of compliance, and that
I mean, I can
Either way, right?
So I understand the chain link fence is out of compliance, so they have to address that issue for them screening, but we're talking about with the screening wall, can the screening wall be on their side to service their security? This is just a question I'm asking. Or does it have to, because we're saying it's a butt up against the residents, they can't have two fences?
Correct.
So it's like, our residents either have to take their fence down, or you put the masonry screening wall up, or
Or they could do vinyl.
Okay. I just, I'm going to just focus on the screening wall side of things. I just think we should have some input. We did this once before, I remember before, they did comment, said they did not want their fence down.
Correct.
It was part of their security, made them feel safe, you know, driving it out. But I'm looking at that picture, it looks like that might have even been more than two residents, that fencing seemed to go all the way down the alleyway.
It's pretty ragged looking back there.
It may look raggedy, but that's It may look raggedy, but that's their privacy mechanism. And if you're gonna take it down with the screening wall, that's multiple households that need to be informed.
I think it's just, I think it's, I think it's just one.
Chair, I just want to correct the, the statement about vinyl. Uh, so a reinforced decorative masonry or concrete masonry unit block, so it's CMU, wall six feet in height above grade with a stone cap is what we allow. Or a three-foot green belt with evergreen trees, but there's not enough room.
So can we clarify? I think there's been a discussion that there's one and then there's two units. Can we clarify how many units would be, how many residential units would be impacted by a screening wall?
So it looks like, um, these ones probably no, one, two? One? Okay. Two, one. I'm hearing one.
So one resident would be, one resident would be impacted by a screening wall. And by being impacted, that means that they have an existing wooden fence and that fence would be removed and a wall, a concrete wall in compliance with the ordinance would be put in its place along the lot line. Is that correct?
That's what I'm hearing.
All right.
And then what about the trees?
In addition to that, the screening wall has to come down either way.
So what about the trees? Looks like they put the wall or the fence around the trees. So are we telling, are we saying to these people now the trees have to come down too? And if that's the case, whose responsibility are the trees?
Isn't that the residence fence though? That's the residence fence on the other side of the alley.
It is the residence fence, but if we're gonna...
And we're requiring a screening wall.
So...
A screening wall on their property.
On their side.
It's on the lot line, yeah, for clarity. It's on the lot line.
So what, all right, so let's throw something else in the mix. What about the trees?
Chair, uh...
Chair, if I can add a thought, we have something a little larger than that on this situation. You can see there are two telephone poles that are utility effectives on that line on the outside of those fence lines. And that's what's gonna have to be accessibly available to all the utility agencies of the city, whether they be underground or they be poles. But you can see beside those trees, you have, right there on the white fence line, you have a telephone pole that is on the exterior side of the alley of the fence line. So putting a screen wall on that side may be more difficult than it would be practical.
So Mr. Myers, what would your recommendation be?
Screen wall needs to go on the east side of the wall of, of the alley.
On the other side of it?
That is correct.
And you would do a masonry wall?
Yes, according to our ordinance, the screen wall is designed to be a masonry format of six feet.
Masonry or concrete masonry unit. Uh, Chair, if I can just also add, um, the planning commission could, um, issue, uh, if you wanted the, the screening wall to be on the west side of the alley, as you have issued the statement in the past, you would say with, i-if it's reasonable to locate the screening wall, per the utility pole clearance and also if the resident approves. And then we could build it adjacent to the trees. So that's just one way to play ball with the screening wall to be on the west side.
Well, the trees seem problematic to me. Because of one good storm, it's gonna take out the wall. True.
The other side of it is, is that's just the area over, you know, over on Chesterfield. When you go down this alleyway and you, if you have to do that the entire length, again, you're gonna interfere with those two, two houses that are behind this on the, the hoss side in the alleyway, one and two, see right there? They, they utilize. That's not included?
That's open.
Okay.
Essentially, it's from the trees down.
I mean, the entire purpose of a masonry wall along the residential lot line is what? City planner, what's the goal there?
Uh, okay, so cities require screening devices, like six-foot screening devices, to protect the adjacent residential community from commercial uses. And that could be different nuisances or potential perceived nuisances such as noise or odor or sight, um, or even security.
Is it, would you also say, can you please go back to the picture that showed the alleyway? The other one that showed the tree? Please? Is it accurate? You may or may not know this, Mara, city planner, but, um, in instances where there's a utility pole, I believe that in the past, we would have put a fence to the pole and then started the fence along the line to, to, you know, so in other words, yes, the fence has a gap where, where the utility pole is. Do you, would, is that accurate? Do you, do you know and what would, what would be your position on that as well?
Chair, I, I don't know for ordinance standards, but I would say that that is a reasonable request and I've seen it as a case study in the past. But we do have other people in the room that might be able to trim in on ordinance standards.
So I'm just trying to mentally wrap my head around this. So you're saying from where his gate is, essentially behind the tree, if we were to, if we were to go on the west side of the alleyway versus the east, you're gonna see a masonry wall essentially from his gate, behind the trees, to the telephone pole, break, and then go the rest of the way down? Am I...
Chair, you'll, you'll have another break at the other telephone pole.
Okay.
And at the trees.
That's a whole lot of masonry wall.
The wall would have to be along the lot line. It couldn't infringe into their, into their personal, personal property. So, so to answer your question, it'd be along the lot line of the residential unit abutting the alleyway.
So then it wouldn't be behind the trees because that would be... So then...
That's another question, right? I mean, the trees are there, you obviously, the trees would either have to come down or you say we don't put a fence there.
Chair.
Please.
We do allow for screening, um, like evergreen tree screening. So I would say trees are adjacent and they seem like they're closer, close together. Uh, but to correct the, um, our tour of a potential west side screening wall, they, the applicant would leave 20 feet at the corner, the clear vision triangle corner, and then start there, they can gradually start or start their six-foot masonry wall, cap it here if you want, protect the trees, um, and then continue it here and then continue it throughout.
Could you come up, if you can, come, come up to the podium, please?
It's recorded.
I've been there 45 years on that, on this lot. And I mean, good things and bad things, bad things. One morning, nineteen eighty, the building burned down Christmas morning, total loss, and interest rates were 21%. But that's not the point. My point is security. In the, your police department, when, when we had it before, before we put this defense up, a lot of vendors listen, vendors listen in the cars. I, my opinion, it should be on the, on the east side. The security wise, people can hide, nobody sees them when they come in from the other side and break in the cars. Can check it on the police reports. The reports are now lately, it came down. It's much, much better than it was before. But I'm afraid the, the new cars or used cars, they're a lot of breaks and stealing radios, tires, wheels. Nobody sees them. And it's on the, on the other side. They can walk from, from the, the police goes down the Grashett, Grashett, not to the alley.
So you would like to see the, the security fence on the east side of the alley?
That's the only way it's safe.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I guess the property owner concurs with Mr. Myers, that it should be on the east side of the alleyway.
Mr. Chair, I, I just had a off-the-record discussion with Mr. Myers as well, and it just, it doesn't seem to make any practical sense for purposes of safety, for aesthetics, to require that type of screening wall on the west side of the alley. It seems to make, considering this situation as before, the board is faced by the applicant to require a masonry wall on the east side of the alley because of the utility poles and these existing mature trees and the existing fence that's already along that residence. And the board does have the authority to require it on the east side as opposed to the west side under certain circumstances. And from, from city's attorney's standpoint, that would be our recommendation.
Well, I think we've got one thing out of the way. It will be on the east side unless there's any sort of disagreement with that.
I mean, I, I understand the need for a security fence on the applicant's side of the alley. If I, if we're gonna say we're gonna put a fence up there, I wouldn't put up a masonry fence either. But it's an expensive fence. They don't need a masonry, they need security. They don't need the scope of what, the expense of a masonry wall. You know, but again, I struggle. I mean, if the board, if this commission wants to do that and that's the prerogative, but we have held a lot of other applicants to that standard and they paid the expense. And so in my opinion, we're being inconsistent with how we've, the expense incurred by other applicants.
Chair.
Please.
I'm in agreement to, if we talk about a screening wall, which is a requirement. And we have heard from the residents before, we said the residents had the, they were allowed to forego a screening wall on their property line. We already have these trees as a barrier. So to put the screening wall across the street, I don't know, I mean, on, just on the lot side, because you can't butt up two different types of fencing. But we just waive a screening wall and they just put a more unacceptable security fence on their side of the property. As a screening wall, you can't see through it and they jump over the fence, you know? The masonry, you don't, you have the same visibility if they have their six-foot wall that she, or fencing that she described as an option that you had visibility. Especially off of the alleyway. Jump down, can't see, jump back out, can't see. I think my, my, my call, uh, recommendation, if we're gonna do no screening wall on the resident's side, then the owners have to just get a different fence for their side. But it's not chain link. If they want to maintain visibility, a cement wall is just a wall to jump over and no one to see what's happening. They want security.
Can you put the same picture back up? I'm gonna tell you my, what, how, what I want, what I like. In my opinion, the fence that exists on both sides of the utility pole, but not the shorter fence. I wouldn't touch the shorter fence that's closer to the alley because you got 20 feet there that you wouldn't be able to touch anyways. I would just, my, my, my suggestion is to put up a masonry wall in compliance with the ordinance where that taller picket fence in the back sits. And then, again, to reiterate, on the applicant's side, they don't need a masonry fence on that side. They just need security. So I would look for a cheaper solution that will achieve their security objectives. That would be my recommendation. How does the rest of the commission feel?
I think that should be contingent on the resident.
You know what, I would, and that's a good point. Um, I would, and we've always been flexible that if the resident said, I want to maintain this fence that I have, that one resident, then I would be in favor of that as well. But in the absence of them saying they'd be in favor, then that's, I would want the masonry walls, my suggestion. Because we've had a mix of applicants, some say, no, I would, you know, go ahead and put the masonry wall, some say, no, I want my own private.
It was stated that that is one residence. There wasn't two. That was just a long extension.
Yes.
It's a single-family residence.
It's a multi-family residence?
Or it's a multi-unit property?
It's a single piece of property.
A single person.
Multiple head residences, but same piece of property. I've been back there a few times.
It's never a good thing. So part of me is thinking, do we table this to see what the property owner states? If the property owner does not want anything touched?
Well, we could also make a motion with that contingency too, right? If the rest of this body agrees with that, though I don't know that everybody agrees with me on how I would approach it.
I don't agree with a masonry wall on that side. We got all those big trees and lamp, light posts. It doesn't make sense to be cutting and stopping masonry, I think. Residents have put up a screening, so to speak. They want to take it down. Or a masonry that's stopping it starting amongst the trees and the post. That would be their option, but I think it should definitely be their call.
To be clear, I'm not suggesting taking down the fence in the properties, in the, in the resident's property area that's, we can't do that. I'm only talking about the fence on the lot line.
Mr. Stokes?
I agree with Commissioner Broll on all points.
I have a question.
Please.
You just brought up that you're back there. You've been back there a lot of times and there's multiple residents. I miss, do I assume that that is a rental property?
As, as far as I'm aware, most of it is.
Now we might have another problem if you're trying to get a hold of a property owner.
There's some record who the property owner is.
Doesn't matter. We have a lot of property owners that don't live and are hard to reach. Anyway, Mara, do we have the option to allow him to do security fencing only? He has to do the screen wall. It's just a matter of which side of the alley. That's the bottom line. Thank you.
Well, if the bottom line is, is a masonry wall, I'm gonna say go... Well, if the bottom line is, is a masonry wall, I'm gonna say go on the east side of the road. And don't worry about the mischigas on the other side of the alleyway. And it would potentially be more continuity if the fences are coming down. Then it would have more continuity and it would be consistent with the entire back line of the property. I just don't trust those trees, the power lines. Why DTE has not come and done something a little bit better, I under, I understand it's irrelevant, but it's still an issue with those trees. So is anybody prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Sure.
The motion that exists does not even address the fence, does it? Okay. You did say that. So we have not discussed them in lieu of, pay in lieu of landscaping trees. I mean, you guys know, I, payment in lieu. Anybody disagree?
I have no problem with the go.
All right. Mara, maybe you can articulate my point better than I can in terms of the fence. If I make a motion, would, would you, would you mind stating it as I articulated? Would you go and do that?
Clarification. So we can either grant the waiver or, or require the applicant to pay in lieu. So are we requiring them to pay in lieu instead of a whole, full waiver for eleven trees?
What is your feeling?
I'm asking a question for clarification of your motion.
You know, if we're gonna make, if we're gonna enforce the masonry wall, then I would say that I would waive the trees.
I could support you on that.
And I would also waive the site tree requirement as well.
Does anybody disagree?
No.
I don't disagree. Did, did we discuss waivers for number three and four?
Don't think we got there yet.
Before we make a motion, shouldn't we have those too?
Well, we were getting to that, I just had a clarification question, correct.
I'm good waiving. I personally think that the property looks very nice from the front right now, and I'm hard-pressed to think we can make it much better. I, I, I'm all, I have no problem waiving that.
Yeah, I, I have no problem with three and four yet.
Yeah. The front of the property has always been beautiful, whether it was a BMW dealership, a Porsche dealership, it's, the back of it's kinda hinky, that's all. I think the applicant, I won't say something.
So is something that we're saying, like, can we put the, the retaining wall on the east side of the alley? Is that something that we can even?
Put your name down if you can, just introduce yourself to.
Yeah, my name is Glenn Greisman. So the retaining wall has to be there regardless, and that the chain link has to get removed. So at that point, is there any way that we can just put a retaining wall on the east side across the property line? Have it stop where the building is, recontinue after the building? But there is a gate on that alleyway right there. So that way, like, a fire truck or something can get through because there's an awning on the front of the property. It's on the other side, the entrance into the property. It's on the, yep. So if you go from Chesterfield, you can kinda see. So that gate right there, maybe where we do like a security fence that's maybe automated, that the fire department can have access if anything needs to happen. And then we put a six-foot retaining wall across the property. If it's something that has to be done anyway and the chain link has to get removed, instead of putting a, a retaining wall on the west side of the alley and then also doing security fence, it, it's kinda doing, you know, both side, instead of doing both sides of the alley, we just do the one side and we do the retaining wall with like a gate that has access on the alleyway. Is it something that we can do?
Chair, I'll, I'll add that even if the applicant did not seek to install a security fence on the east side of the alley, they would still need to screen the parking lot. So we didn't even talk about the parking lot screening device. But there would still be in need of some device to screen between the alley and the parking lot.
Chair, is that what he was, is that what you're describing? That he will put the screening wall around the parking lot on the same side?
Right, so everywhere where you see a chain link fence, I mean, if, yeah, where we do like, uh, yeah, well, I mean, a retaining wall because that's, if it, if it needs to be done, yeah, I mean, there, security is number one because at the end of the day, if that's open to the alley and the public can get to it, I've, I've, I'm in the business now and theft occurs when you don't have security. And then that puts police lives at matter. I mean, it, it, the list goes on. I mean, dealerships are the number one target because it's the easiest way, I mean, to really get money. I mean, like, you can steal a car in two minutes now with the way that the keys are. So I mean, it's, it's not even really wheels and all that anymore. They're literally physically stealing entire cars. I have a dealership in Clinton Township right now and, uh, three weeks ago I was broken into and they were trying to steal keys. They went Dorian Ford, Moran Chevrolet, you know, and they finally got caught, but they stole four hundred cars and excess of eight, eight million dollars of damage. So security is number one and if we have to have a retaining wall, I, I, it does, it's not nice that, you know, they do have concealment if they do want to, you know, pose a risk. But if the retaining wall has to be there and it's completely blocked off, can we put it on the east side of the alley instead of the west?
Thank you, Chair. Continuing on from my comments earlier, Mara or John, that's what I was envisioning was a retaining wall on the east side along the alley. I believe the applicant has voiced a concern about being able to have a gate in that, in that screening wall. Is that something that would be permitted under the circumstances?
For security reasons and for access for first responders, that would be adequate to put that, that screening wall up to those gates and then put your gate for security and have access to your first responders would be responsible action on our part.
Thank you. And then could the, the building itself act as a continuation of the, of the screening wall? Where the screening wall would come down to the building? Obviously, we would not build the screening wall around and allow that back of the building to act as a, a screening wall and then continue the screening wall beyond the building?
Correct.
Thank you.
That sounds like a reasonable compromise. Just ask your neighbors to clean up the backyard. All right.
My desire to make a motion.
Okay. Does anybody wish to make that motion?
I will make a statement of it. I have a following motion that we allow for administrative site plan review with the following waivers. Do any read each one of them?
I would, I would recommend just reading the, the, the motion in its entirety. I can certainly read it for the planning commission's benefit if you prefer, if you have to do so. Motion to allow for administrative site plan approval for an automobile dealership at 24717 and 24757 Grashett. Legal descriptions are zero-two-one-four, parcel ID number rather is zero-two-one-four-three-zero-two-two-eight-zero-two-four and zero-two-one-four-three-zero-two-two-eight-zero-two-zero. Provided that a revised site plan drawn to scale is presented in the city planner to address the comments during the planning commission meeting. The required and recommended conditions outlined in the planner's review dated May thirtieth, 2024, and the required conditions in the engineer's letter. And based on the fact that the site plan is generally in compliance with the ordinance, also to include screening wall requirement along the east side of the alley from the side street to the north and extending in a solidly direction to the side street to the south. Listed on the first page of the site plan review is the information needed for the site plan conditional approval. And below are the following waivers. Planning commission also grants the following waivers. Grant a waiver with regard to the site tree requirement. Also waive the requirement to install a below-grade landscaped island. The applicant must still provide landscaped area above grade. And waive the landscape architect seal requirement because the project is a reoccupancy, not new construction.
I believe you missed item two. I think.
I may have. Was there something else?
No, item two, I didn't think you read it into the motion, is my point.
Oh, waive the site tree requirement because it's excessive?
Yes.
Yeah, I did say it, I just didn't use the word excessive.
Okay.
Mara, was there anything else that should be included within that motion for consideration this evening?
That was great. I think we have another person to do motions. I do have a couple of things to add. So first of all, did we grant a waiver or was it payment in lieu?
I believe it was waiver.
Waiver of eleven trees. Okay. And then the last thing would just be to amend that motion to allow for a cut within the wall where the applicant will provide a security gate.
Correct.
Okay. Nice job.
We have motion. Do we have support?
Support.
I'm sorry, who was the motion?
I think Ms. Naylor was making the, uh.
I made the motion, right? He just read it for me. Thank you.
Do we have support?
Support.
We have motion support. Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Ms. Julinski, yes. Mr. Brol?
No.
Mr. Stokes?
No.
Mr. DeHaut?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item E under new business, are we tabling this because you did not have the site plan? Is that correct? Or the special land use?
Chair, we can review the special land use. The notice has been sent to the public. That's why we received Marines or the previous comment earlier, dirty public comment. So we have a, a motion to recommend conditional approval of the proposed special land use for a parking lot at 22100 Grashett, zero-two-one-four-three-one-one-seven-seven-zero-zero-five based on the facts in the planner's review letter dated May thirtieth, 2024, and contingent on the following. The applicant must provide enhanced screening and landscaping beyond site plan requirements. Provides, the applicant must provide a note on the site plan understanding that parking of inoperable vehicles or vehicles associated with the auto repair business may result in the revocation of the vehicle repair facility business license and site plan and special land use for 22100 Grashett. And the applicant must receive site plan approval, which will address the inoperable vehicles stacked and parked in the parking lot to the east of the site and the vehicles parked within the alley.
Anything else, Ms. Brushevsky? Commission, do you have any comments, questions?
Just on the special land use? No.
Still, I'm gonna, I've said this before and I'm gonna say it again. It's just sad that one of the few architecturally significant buildings we have in the city of East Point got torn down for a potential parking lot. Does anybody have anything? All right.
I change my mind.
Okay. Your prerogative. Have at it, Busha.
Mara, question, just for my clarification. So we're just doing the special land use right now, correct?
Chair, yeah.
But the special land use according to the motion hinges on site plan requirements being met.
Yes.
So how do we do the special land use when there's so many problems with the site plan?
Chair, um, the applicant would move forward through the special land use process. And then the, the planning commission will review the site plan in July. But it's also up to the planning commission if you seek to table this today. And then address both in July.
I'm all for that, quite frankly, as opposed to doing something half-done. It seems ridiculous we should be able to knock it all out at one time.
I do wanna say, Chair, it is not uncommon for cities to see a special land use request in front of their site plan because, as you guys know, special land uses are more subjective and then site plans are objective. So they want to make sure that they are getting approval for their project via special land use, which is more like subjective, murkier, and before investing in the sealed drawings. So that's not an uncommon process, just so you guys know.
Let's pull the commission.
Is the applicant here?
I don't know, actually. Will the applicant please stand up?
All right, so much for questions.
Let's pull the commission. Table or have at it. Ms. Julinski?
Well, I'm kind of torn just because I understand your point and that's why I wanted clarification. They don't want to move forward with a site plan if they're not gonna get special land use. Correct?
Um, Chair, so I just wanna be clear that I don't know what the app, well, the applicant's intent was to be on the agenda, but they didn't meet their site plan deliverable deadline. So it, uh, it is a policy that other municipalities and projects have taken just to have special land use, but I don't believe that that policy was the intent of the applicant.
Gotcha. And plus I have questions for the applicant and I have questions because I live there. And I'm gonna tell you, coming through the alley today, I was blocked by tow trucks. So I'm good with tabling.
Okay. Mr. Brol?
I was gonna say move forward, however, with the understanding that the applicant was actually intending to do both at the same time. Reason why I would have said, you know, let's do the special land use is to make sure the applicant doesn't spend money. However, that wasn't their intent, so I'm fine tabling.
They left. I'm good tabling as well.
I agree to table.
All right. So we make a motion or get a motion to table item E?
Motion to table item E, set a motion to recommend special land use for 22100 Grashett.
Mr. Chair, that's to table to the next meeting.
Correct.
To July.
Yes.
Support.
We have motion and support. Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Ms. Julinski, yes. Mr. Brol?
Yes.
Mr. Stokes?
Yes.
Yes.
Chairman DeHunt?
Yes. So item F was something I asked to have put on the agenda, just to, an overview of special land use expectations, and actually, ironically, a lot of this came from conversations that I had with Commissioner Lubek, that we do these things, we give these special land uses, and things don't happen. Follow through is kind of, so if we may, I just want a broad overview from the city. What is the expectation? So once a special land use has been granted, what is the process within, well, now, your office, Mr. Myers, what is your process going to be to make sure that we don't have these extraneous special land uses floating around untouched?
We'd like to make sure that the city has. We'd like to make sure that the city's policies have a restrictive time limit to be active, and then require them to put a permit and process into motion in a timely restricted time, a reasonable time. But right now, that's obviously gets laid open, and exactly, when we do have, at present, I have a property that we've learned on since I've been here, that they've been given an extension without any cause for that extension, other than they haven't started the process after a year of being in land, special, in site plan review approval. And somewhere along the line, we need to lock those kinds of timelines down, or not grant them any extensions if they're not gonna comply with those timelines that the council, I mean, that the planning commission or our ordinances are set before them.
Okay. Well, they actually, one of the biggest impetus of this was the storage facility at Stevens and Greshit, the bane of our existence, because now we have new owners, and the prior owners did not follow through on the retail location. They did not follow through on phase two, and their special land use was granted based off of promises.
Well, on the retail part side, though, they said they would ask people, I mean, they didn't promise they would get retail in there. That was, I think, their hope, or what they sold us.
Oh, yeah, they sold us.
Well, the retail portion was suggested by the planning commission. That was not part of the original blueprints.
That was my very first vote. I remember being excited.
So that was, that was a planning commission suggestion, that they said, okay, you want that because you're approving it. If that's what you want, we'll do it. But they're not the one that suggested that retail.
Even if you extract the retail portion, they also had said that they were gonna do a facility immediately behind. That was phase two. Then when push came to shove, they didn't have money for that, but yet they had money to go across the street and start a project that they never did anything with. So this, these are, this is where some of the angst came in, and that's why I just wanted just a little bit of a discussion about this, that's all.
Okay, Chair, I'll also provide that special land uses require site plans by Michigan State law. So we have a list that throughout your quarterly reports, that the planning department provides you, of planning commission projects that have received either administrative or planning commission site plan approval, and we have a column at the end of that, each, in the table, that says when the site plan is expired. So city staff's monitoring this, making sure site plans meet their, their conditions, or the site plan will expire and they have to revisit planning commission. Within that as well, the city administration is doing a lot. We are so happy to welcome our building official, John Myers, and I'm sorry that we didn't get to introduce him formally earlier. We're kind of moving things along, but we are so happy to have him, and as well as Ian McCain, our economic development director, and we are getting stuff done within the city. One policy that we're moving forward is having conversations with the city clerk as they go through their annual business license process, renewal process, and making sure that all of these businesses have performed their site plan obligations. So there's one way that the city is also tracking site plan obligations, which are special land use obligations.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Otherwise, okay, thank you for the update. No unfinished business. We will move on to the second hearing of the public. If you wish to be heard, you have three minutes. Voting is yours. Please write your name on the piece of paper.
Good evening, Commissioners. Gary Sasek, basically a lifetime resident of East Point, and I am very happy that you tabled the last item, because if what I was hearing and kind of reading is correct, the gentleman purchased a piece of property, leveled the building, put in a gravel lot, all of this with intention of getting a site plan approval, and yet he hasn't done anything else. Shades of, as you mentioned, Commissioner Chairman DeHunt, the storage facility. First state bank closed. We had a gentleman buy the property, wanted to put a gas station in, gonna get a site plan setup. So I think we really have to start holding people's feet to the fire, and, because we can't have people buying property, changing it without the city council approval, without the commission approval. So I'm glad you tabled it, and I hope you really hold their feet to the fire. Thank you.
Just write your name.
I'm Jeff Solak. I'm here as the owner of the property at 24340, the used car lot that we discussed earlier. I'm sorry I didn't bring up the waiver that I was asking for. You had asked me to put a bunch of planter boxes in the parking lot, which I thought was just over excessive at a very large cost to me, being the owner. The person that came up and spoke with me was the architect for the site survey, and I had thought that he had spoke and said that he wanted us to waive the parking block, the planter boxes. So if you, Mara, if you don't mind showing the, the view again of our site survey, survey that we had done, that you had, you have me putting nine planter boxes in the parking lot, along with the parking blocks, and it just seems over excessive for something that has been a used car lot now. I've owned the building since 2015, and I know it's been a used car lot since 1983. So I'm asking you if I could waive the planter boxes in the parking lot. I know Mara had, we had discussed this, and I've been into the office talking about it, and you guys insist on me putting a green belt in the parking lot. Now, this is a very small used car lot. It holds 18 cars. That's all it holds. By me putting nine planter boxes in there, it will only take it down to about 12 cars. And I know we've discussed that you didn't need to have a green belt unless you have a parking lot of bigger than 20 cars. Whether that's correct or not, I'm not arguing the fact. My only concern is that it's been my livelihood there, owning the used car lot, and I'm gonna have to spend a lot of money to put part, um, planter boxes in the parking lot now, which is going to take up space. And I'm asking for those planter boxes to be waived. And we had a site survey drawing showing that, and if you look at it, you have to sort of agree with me that it's something that nine planter boxes in a small used car lot is just gonna cost me a lot of money, and it's something that I don't, I don't believe is necessary for, just for what it is. I mean, it's just a small used car lot.
I have to stop you. You're coming to your three minutes, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry.
My recommendation, since we already deliberated on this, is to have a discussion with Mara to see if there's any way. I kind of wish you would've spoken up earlier during that time, but my recommendation, since we've moved, we've moved on, is to talk with the city and see what Mara can do. Thank you.
Chair, for the record, we cannot waive screening devices.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone else wish to be heard? Anyone else wish to be heard? Seeing none, we will close the second hearing of the public, and we will move on to training. If anybody wants to stay around for aging in place training, they're welcome to, or they can be done. Commissioners, you have to stay.
Oh, sure. I get to.
I do training every day.
Okay, so I thought that we would.
Let's take five minutes, so we, yeah.
Oh, sounds weird to me.
I didn't have the money. If I had the money, I didn't have the time. And now, if I don't take a vacation, I'm immigrants.
It's the greatest town. They got this whole Waco Ho area. You get stuff to eat, it's right at the.
Are we ready? All right, Mara, can you power through? Training. Or do we want to table it?
No.
All right.
Can we just insert?
All right, hit it, Mara. Talk about old people. Hey, we are. I got my ARP card already in the mail.
I do, too, actually.
So, there you go.
Okay, so we have the aging in place training. We have an article that talks about what aging in place is. So many people want the same things as they go older, to stay in their homes, to maintain independence for as long as possible, and to turn to family and friends for help when needed. Saying in your home, as you get older, is called aging in place. But many older adults and their families have concerns about safety, getting around, and other daily activities. Living at home as you age requires careful consideration and planning. This article offers more of those considerations. What I thought would be helpful today, as opposed to me reading the whole article, is to review a checklist and give an assessment of how we, our homes, are set up to age in place. So here's just, before we go into the checklist, infographic, so some ideas of home safety tips for older adults is to install a ramp. And the reason why we're discussing this today is for us to, as we engage in the master plan process and we're writing policy, we could write policy that pertains to aging in place provisions, like require, I don't know, like we already do, require good lighting, but grab bars or fall, reducing fall hazards, or something like that. So it's just to wrap our minds about how we can have more inclusive policy for our older adults who wish to age in place. So one example is installing a ramp with handrails at the front door. Removing area rugs is also a way to age in place. Ensuring good lightings at the top and bottoms of stairs in particular. Install grab bars in the bathroom and reduce any fall hazards, like any wet surfaces, floors, or any obstacles within a hallway. So we have our checklist. Do you want to spend a couple minutes filling it out? And then we'll come back with our assessment of how safe our homes are. How are we doing, you guys?
We're done.
Okay. Is there anything that we need to do to improve our homes? I know, right?
Gee, where can we get a builder?
So, just curious, just to connect the dots. Just a question, connecting dots. So you were saying, I guess, we were talking about our master plan, et cetera. So it's just like we're talking about building senior housing units or something?
Yeah, yeah.
Because these just seem to be like a personal home.
Is that for new builds or current as well?
Chair, please. I think this is focused both on new builds as well as retrofitting existing buildings, which I think is particularly important in East Point as a built-out community. And hi, I'm still over here, you might be able to see my hair, but the rest of me is also...
Yeah, we can see your hair again.
Now we know why he has that hairstyle.
Anyway. But yeah, so new builds as well as retrofitting existing housing.
Probably need to update the whole telephone numbers thing and the emergency numbers.
What did you say?
Number three.
Yeah.
There we go. That would probably be very retro of us. And I have a couple of landlines downstairs, so I could sell people. Hey, I had milk service up until fifteen years ago.
Next training, define retrofitting.
Emergency phone numbers of people to contact in a cabinet or something. You just got your telephone.
I like that idea, too. Is that what you said, Commissioner Naylor? Couldn't hear you.
Emergency telephone numbers, like inside of a kitchen cabinet.
Yeah, I like that.
Somebody can find it, or on the side of a refrigerator.
Yeah, it's a good point.
My grandma always kept hers, right, yeah.
That's a really good point. Anything else stuck out to you was a good point?
Talked about the medicines being labeled and clear.
Yeah.
That's another thing where maybe build a little, because most people take their medicine in the kitchen, like in the inside of a kitchen cabinet. So you have spice racks, med racks, that has the list of the doses and everything.
Grab bars and tall toilets.
Tall toilets.
Oh, yeah, tall toilets.
Comfort height, comfort height. Yep. Having just had two knee replacements in the last two years, I can appreciate... Comfort height toilets.
Yeah, for sure. That's a good point.
It's amazing how...
Except my bathroom is so small.
Yeah.
The perfect drunk's bathroom.
I don't know how applicable the gun stuff was.
Oh, seriously, you could sit on the toilet, puke in the sink at the same time, it's perfect. But it would probably not be a good old person's bathroom.
Sounds like you have experience with that, John.
Never you mind about that.
Allegedly.
Oh, did you... One other thing that I learned recently during an adaptive reuse process, like training like this, is about handles. And the takeaway is not to install, like, the knobs, because they're not, they're more difficult to turn, and to install the lateral handles. Yeah, hatches, thank you. Or latches, and pocket doors are easier for people with less mobility.
So having a daughter who is handicapped as an adult, the things that I find, of course, are the rugs. Definite trip hazards. But she also has Parkinson's symptoms, so all she does is her hands shake, and you can't grab stuff. So like she has to drink through straws, or like you said, you can't do
Yeah.
handles or anything that turn. You know, you can pull or push, you know, or slide, like the pocket doors. But just like all the little things we don't think of, like walk-in tubs or showers, you know, where there's no barrier for them to trip over, you know, going over into a tub is a pretty high-impact thing for someone who doesn't have that mobility.
Great points, yeah.
Most of those bathrooms are doing like the hospitals, where it's just a entryless shower, the whole floor's tiled to a drain. So there's nothing to step over it off, it's just the drain area.
What a jerk's house.
The whole bathroom is just one tiled floor with a drain.
You could even glass off, just where the shepherd is.
Just not get the excess water, you're saying?
Right.
Oh, yeah?
So, having just gone through traumatic falls, I've been in hotel rooms that have that type of thing. And I actually, if they tried to put me into one of those handicap accessible rooms, I refused to do it because I actually found that unless you're wearing some sort of shower shoe, you're more prone to falling. So I'm very mindful. I don't know what kind of flooring these hotels are using, but the ones where they were talking about where you walk, it's all open with a drain. And in January, I actually fell in my house. And I guess, at least to AARP, I'm old. But what was interesting is I fell on the rug. I tripped on the rug, fell right down on my brand-new knees, pushed in my TV unit. I ended up having a TV in my hands. But to Sheila's point, I ended up putting, I was praying to the TV.
They saved the TV?
No, that was going to pop me in the head. So I managed to get it back on the stand, and I'm thinking, oh, hell, what am I going to do? I happened to have a fake fireplace, so I was able to pull myself up by the fireplace. So rugs are horrible. Rugs, as nice as rugs are, they're the devil. It was absolutely horrible. And it was the second time I fell after surgery, and I've got a big old lump on my knee because of falling. So, you know, yeah, I might joke about getting old, but it's true. We don't bounce back as quickly as we did when we were 30s.
Well, obviously, the other thing for showers and tubs, mostly the showers, are the shower chairs, the...
Bench chairs.
Correct. And they have actual shower chairs, too, that are mobile, you can take in and out. And the non-skid things that you can put at the bottom of showers and tubs. For that, those are great as well. And for falling, I know it's a service that costs money, and we always laughed at the commercial, "Help, I'm falling and I can't get off."
There was a need for it.
But if you live alone especially, you have to have a Plan B if something happens.
I would also go so far...
Like someone that checks on you or something, you know?
I would also go so far as to say that the floor plan of the dwelling needs to be accessible because a senior citizen is not going to want to have to go into a basement to do their laundry. So you need to think about the floor plan, whether it's stackable units in the utility closet or something like that. It should be on one floor.
Yeah, like where you're living.
When I was caring for my elderly aunt, I managed to keep her on one floor. I did the laundry myself, I didn't let her go into the basement. Everything was very close. And she was small, so if she fell, she didn't have heart of claw, and it was, the whole house was carpeted at the time, so there were certain things that you could do. But you also have to take into account surfaces that are walker-friendly, cane-friendly. There's a lot to this, and it needs to... If we're going to learn about this, we got to learn about all of it, then. There's more to it than just... That's surface-level thinking. We need to go deeper.
Some of the things are the pileless carpet, like the indoor-outdoor type carpet, it's no pile, trip-on. And also, the smaller the tiles, the less slippery they are, so you can't do those 12-by-12 bathrooms. Bathrooms that have the one-by-one pieces, Jose, one-by-ones, you know, they have that slip resistance, so you know, it's bad across the whole panel, smooth surface, you know, broken up into smaller.
It's slippery.
The grout that holds you from having slippage.
Well, that makes sense.
So just the size of the floor should be nothing bigger than two-by-twos. Time is...
All right, good training.
I know, you guys want to do it. I do have one more thing to add. So when we talk about aging in place, I guess these mechanisms to change our homes are not just relevant for those who want to age in place, but all relevant for all folks on the spectrum of mobility. So, like Chair mentioned, you suffered from an injury. And every, I mean, I had a broken knee, so like people are prone to injuries, and so it's just good to have this infrastructure in place to prepare us for when we do have our injuries. And then also, children as well have limited mobility, and so it's not just for those who are older or aging, it's for everyone.
Thank you.
Precautionary.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Moving on to Commissioner comments. Ms. Broziewski, do you have anything else to say?
I'm just going to welcome John again, but it's going to be a pleasure to work with you, John. Can't wait to get started on some good things. Okay, I'm done. Thanks, guys.
Ian?
Oh, yeah, what'd he do, leave us already?
He's probably on inspection. Ian, you're on deck.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. Couple things. One, condolences to the Lubec family on the loss of Jeff. And then, of course, also welcome to our new building official, John Myers. He's been a great asset to the team already, and we're really excited to have him on board. Some upcoming things that we have in the pipeline, as you know, we're gearing up for the next round of our summer concert series. The next two concerts are on the 15th in partnership with the Grash at Cruz from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. in East Point High School parking lot. So come out and enjoy the sounds of the Shamrock Jazz Orchestra, which if you're not familiar, they're mostly East Detroit High School alumni, really great group, one of my personal favorites. And then, June 26th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Library Courtyard, we're going to have Soundproof, which again is another East Point favorite. They played for us twice last year, once at the library and once here at the City Hall Amphitheater. So if you're free, definitely come out, bring your friends and family, it'll be a good time. And then the other thing I want to uplift, Chairman DeHaun is always asking me, what are we doing and how are we supporting businesses outside of the DDA? So I do want to uplift the social media campaign the Economic Development Department's currently running called Nine Days on Modern Nine. The goal is to promote the businesses that are being affected by the construction. So yes, a few of them are within the DDA, but I would say a majority of them are outside. So we'll be promoting two businesses a day, one in the morning and one in the afternoon, from June 4th all the way through the 14th leading up to the cruise. So follow the city's Facebook page and Instagram, check those out. I'm sure there'll be some familiar favorites like Rogers Volcandy and Ice Cream, they got 88 shares, which is really exciting. And then maybe some new businesses that you'll learn about. One that was one of my favorites was Kiko's Upholstery. The owner was formerly the head upholsterer for Art Van Furniture Corporation, and Warren has trained most of the upholsters in this area. So if you need any upholstery work done, he's your guy. And with that, I'll wrap up. Have a good rest through June, everyone. Thanks.
Ms. Albright?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too wanted to extend my condolences to the Lubec family. I knew Jeff for about 15 years, sat with him on commissions and boards and committees, and, you know, seeing the empty chair there tonight, it's really tough to see. I know that he loved this city, and he wasn't one to mince words. If there was something that he did not like, he would let you know. And there were times that, well, he was, a lot of times at council meetings, but you know he was watching the meeting at home, because there were times where you'd see him come in in time for the second hearing of the public, and he would go right up to that podium, first opportunity that he had, to say what he wanted to say if he saw something that he didn't approve of. And he was a great historian. There were many times that I would consult with him about different things that happened to the city long ago, and he knew his stuff, and he is going to be greatly missed, and he was somebody that really loved the city.
Mr. Stokes?
Condolences to the Lubec family. I didn't know him well or for very long, but talking to him, he was very nice and intelligent.
Ms. Naylor?
Also here in East Point, we are celebrating Juneteenth on June 19th from 4:00 to 7:00 here at the City Hall Courtyard. And get ready to enjoy your summer and take some time to enjoy life. I think, if nothing else, we learned that from this past, our esteemed colleague, that we should make sure we take time to enjoy the journey.
Ms. Asher?
I'd just like to extend my condolences as well to the Lubec family.
Well, Ms. Duff, already said what I had to say, wanted to welcome Mr. Myers. I noticed when I said I was a Buck guy, I got one of these, so I'm pretty darn excited. I've got a cohort over here, other than Rajit's husband, but, you know, we're everywhere, I'm telling you. But yeah, looking forward to summer. Ian, I love those concert series. I have seen the businesses, the 999, like those, despite what other people say about them. I think it's a very nice thing to do. Love acknowledgement, one way or the other. And I didn't even know until I saw your one on Rogers Volcandy, I think it was Wednesday's, it's buy-one-get-one ice cream. And that's it for tonight, thank you.
Yeah, I was going to extend a welcome to Mr. Myers as well, but hopefully, you know, looking forward to what he can do for our city. And it's funny, when that table over there was full, I didn't know Mr. McCain was here for two hours until I saw the poof above the line. That's the only thing I saw was the poof. I'm like, okay, well, I didn't know he was here. John, Mr. DeHaun, Chairman DeHaun, it was a really good idea on your part to, I believe you set up this thing with the Lubecs. So I think, I didn't know how I felt about it, I mean, it was a good idea, but as it happened, I realized it was a really good idea. So, really nice idea. And Mara, keep up the good work. I love your enthusiasm and all the detail you bring on the planning reviews and all that, so keep it up. Great work. Thank you.
Thank you all for indulging me in my melancholy moment. Thank you all for indulging me in my melancholy moment. Um, but one does not put that type of work in and just simply go off into the night. It was due some acknowledgement, hence the, uh, hence this maneuver, shall we say. Um, so I need to give a shout-out to Mara, John Kraus, and Ian for not the May meeting, but the April meeting, when they all shepherded Jeff in because we didn't know if we were going to have enough people and we had stuff that we needed to get done. The man came in a wheelchair because we needed him. I'm sure he would have just as happily stayed at home and probably would have been more comfortable. We always have a pre-planning meeting, conference call, whatever you want to call it. And for the May meeting, when we were on, Jeff jumped on from the hospital. The man had a stroke, and he jumped on from the hospital. What kind of, what kind of commitment level do you see from anybody in this city that would do that? He's going to be missed. Um, and I hope, I hope that some people in this city really realize and understand what we've lost. There were some individuals that didn't think that he had the long-term vision. But Jeff was not willing to sacrifice today for a long-term vision that was going to harm individuals today. So, I'm done talking about Mr. Lubec, but I will never forget him. I do have an angry moment that I need to comment on. So I watched the city council meeting, and there was a gentleman that commented in the last hearing of the public railing against the Pride Resolution and the, uh, Israel, Israelis, something or other, how the Israelis are taking over the world. Or negative genocide. I have friends that have lost family members in Israel. It wasn't fake. This poor woman was walking her dog and got shot, and she ran for cover, and they found her body a few days later. That's real. I have another friend who has two elderly cousins that have been kidnapped in that area. The wife was returned, but denied her medication. The poor woman has had eighteen different surgeries since she was returned, and her elderly husband has still not been returned. I don't know what the answer in the Middle East is. But simply slapping somebody on the hand and saying, "Naughty, don't do that again," is not enough. Nobody's targeting the Palestinians, they're targeting terrorist hate groups. And if you hate people and you are doing something in the name of politics, I don't consider it genocide. If, if you've got a civilization that's willing to use their citizens as a shield, it is a shame, is an infirmia. And I am just so mad that that man said what he said because he obviously doesn't know what the hell he's talking about. With that, I am done with my political soapbox for the night, and I need a beer. Thank you, everybody, for bearing with me. Can I get a motion to close the evening?
Motion.
Support.
Support. Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Brill?
Yes?
Ms. Julinski, yes? Mr. Stokes?
Yes.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Chairman Dehaun?
Yes.